Oh, sorry, I'm a couple of minutes late here. I'm just gonna get my uh, my stuff ready for us here. Alrighty, I see Stephanie is on. Stephanie, um, were you, uh, at the first meeting?
Uh, I I checked my email, so.
Sorry, I can't, you're breaking up. Were you at our first Navali session? Or is this your first time? You can put it in the chat. Were you at the, were you at the first meeting, Stephanie, or is this your first time?
No, I wasn't, but I've been to other ones previously.
Oh, you've been to other ones previously. Okay. Um, well, since you're the only person on, I don't wanna, um, do stuff you've already done. Were you, did you do the neuro review with me?
Yes.
Did the neuro review? Okay. Did you do the small animal practice test?
I don't believe so.
Okay, then we'll work on that one if that sounds good. Okay. Can you see the screen okay?
Yes.
Alrighty. Move this menu. Okay. So I'll just quickly go over, um, multiple choice type questions and what they're supposed to do on Navali. Uh, so in general, there are two types of multiple choice questions. There's the most correct answer, where all of the distractors could be correct, but one of them is better than the others. And then there's the pure, just true false multiple choice, which are primarily recall questions, right? Fact-based questions. So for example, um, what surface protein on the FELV, uh, virus is, um, used for the antigen test? So I think it's like the P20, so they would list like P27, and then these other proteins, and you just have to know that, you know, it's, it's basically memorization recall. The questions are supposed to be written in such a manner that you can answer them without reading the distractors. That's how they're supposed to be. They're supposed to be somewhat specific. And there are questions that, um, are what we call, uh, double jeopardy questions. So those questions are either diagnosis or therapeutic, um, in nature. So for example, uh, they would give you, let's say, a vignette, right? They'd give you a little blurb, and maybe they show you, uh, they would, you know, let's say, uh, you have a 12-week-old puppy that comes in for weight loss, diarrhea, um, it has a pot belly appearance, and, you know, it's, it has a poor body condition score. Uh, it's never been to the vet before. You do a fecal, and they show an image of, you know, hookworm. And then the, uh, question is, which of the following drugs would you use to treat this puppy? Right? So it's double jeopardy in that you have to, number one, be able to identify the parasite, and number two, know what drug treats that parasite. So there's a lot of questions like that. Sometimes they will have a vignette, meaning a little, uh, a case presentation and multiple questions about the case. So what I tell folks to do is to read through the vignette, read all of the questions first before you start answering any. Many times one of those questions will help you answer, um, another question related to that case. So that's my little blurb about, um, just test, how the test is written. Uh, two bits of it, two main points of advice are, number one, when you're finished with a section of multiple choice questions, and there's going to be some that, you know, you have to go back to, right? You didn't know the answer, so you mark it, "I gotta go back to this one." What I've seen, um, you know, examines do is they go back, check the ones they weren't sure about, and then if there's extra time, they start checking other ones. And then they change an answer. Nine times out of 10, if you change an answer to a question you were initially confident about, if you go back and start reading too much into it, um, you will, you will change the correct answer to an incorrect answer. So when you have to go back, finish up those questions you didn't finish up, don't start checking the ones that you did finish, right? Only, only review the ones you are definitely not sure about, that you're in between, you know, have no answer, or in between two or three of the options, um, but don't go start checking the ones that you marked right away. That's number one. Number two is if you're completely stuck and you have no idea what the answer could be, choose the longest answer if it makes sense. Question writers are a little bit more biased with the correct answer and tend to put a little more detail in that answer. Um, so, uh, that's, that's my advice for, uh, the multiple choice, um, Navali stuff for you. So let's get into this one. So which of the following is a consequence of hypomagnesemia? So increased vascular constriction, causing hypertension, hypercalcemia, slowed neuronal conduction and transmission, or cardiac arrhythmias. So you have to know a little bit about what magnesium does. What do you think about that one?
Low, C.
So magnesium, um, still, yes, if it's, if you don't have enough, you will have, uh, muscle weakness. Um, hypomagnesemia causes hypocalcemia. So magnesium, you need enough magnesium because it runs your PTH, so to speak, so it, it's a part of calcium balance. Low magnesium results in low calcium. Uh, magnesium is also important for vascular tone, so if it is, um, one of the things that they will do in human medicine, if you're in shock and not responding to fluids and pressors, they'll give you a dose of magnesium. It's also used, um, in asthma patients, um, as a bronchodilator. So you did good on that one. Okay. When correcting metabolic alkalosis, why is it important to use 0.9% NACL? As your fluid to help correct the metabolic alkalosis? So we have A, hypochloremia and dehydration are the most common causes of metabolic alkalosis. Uh, 0.9% NACL is acidic, which will balance the alkalemia. 0.9 NACL will shift hydrogen ions from the interstitium to the vascular, to the vasculature. Or 0.9% NACL has superphysiological amounts of sodium, which will neutralize the alkalosis.
Is this one also C?
This one is A. So let's, let's talk about, um, acid-base a little bit, dehydration, alkalosis, acidosis, to help you out here a little bit. So with metabolic alkalosis, that means our pH is elevated in our serum, and our bicarbonate is low. So something is, with metabolic alkalosis, causes the bicarb to be low. If we think about, well, what, what would do that, right? So, um, it's usually fluid loss, right? So GI loss from vomiting, sometimes with diarrhea, but more likely with vomiting, will cause a metabolic alkalosis. And if you think about, you know, what happens, you know, when you, when, when we're losing all that fluid from the stomach, right? So what are we losing in addition to the, the water and whatever food is in there? What, what electrolytes and, and things are we losing? Right? So, so, um, just think about stomach acid, right? What's, what is, what's in stomach acid? So with, with vomiting, right? So with, with GI fluid loss, we're gonna be losing, you know, HCl right out of the stomach, hydrogen, hydrogen chloride. And it's really the chloride that's the problem. So, um, just think about when you have fluid loss, let's say, from either vomiting or maybe, uh, sweating or something like that, um, your kidneys, your, your, sorry, say that again? I'll just get, I'll just jump back in. So when, um, when there's fluid loss, right, your, your kidneys are gonna try and keep you hydrated. So they're gonna concentrate the urine, right, by reabsorbing water. How do you reabsorb that water from the renal tubules? So there's, there's two ways, right? Number one is there are these aquaporin channels in your collecting duct that will open up. But in the loop of Henley and in the proximal tubule, we'll reabsorb water also. And that's based on a concentration gradient between water and sodium. So wherever sodium goes, water is going to follow. So in cases of dehydration, what your kidney will, tubules will do is they will try and reabsorb more sodium. Now, if you remember from, you know, physiology and chemistry, uh, if you're moving an electrolyte from one side to another across a semipermeable membrane, it has to be a balanced charge. Let me see, there's something in the chat from you here. Let me open it up. Yeah, there is a weird lag. So if you wanna just type stuff out, um, that'll be fine. Uh, but anyway, um, with dehydration, your renal tubules are gonna reabsorb more sodium, so water will follow. And you're also gonna have more sodium in the medulla of the loop of Henley, which will draw more water back into the vasculature. However, by absorbing more sodium, which is a positive ion, right, you have to balance that. So either you kick us, you, you kick a positive back into the urine, and we don't have a lot of, like, we have potassium, that's pretty much it. Or you reabsorb sodium with a negatively charged ion, so it's balanced. So if you think about, well, what, um, what negatively charged ion is in high concentration, that's gonna be chloride, right? Chloride is the most abundant negatively charged ion in the body. So if we have a patient who's vomiting, and they're vomiting up fluid that has chloride in it, how is the sodium gonna be reabsorbed and not have that charge problem, right? What other negative anion is there that can do that? So if there's no, if there's not enough chloride available, what else is negative that that sodium can balance itself with? We'll give you a hint, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the fluid. It's in the fluid we're recommending. Sorry, it's not, that was wrong. It's, it's the reason the patients become alcoholic, right? So we've, 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 um, have an increase in our bicarb, right, and an increase in our pH. So when you're dehydrated and your kidneys are trying to keep you hydrated by concentrating the urine, reabsorbing water by increasing the amount of sodium that's being reabsorbed, it will balance with bicarb because there's not enough chloride available to balance it. So that's how you get this abundance of, of bicarb creating an alkalosis. So what you need to do in those patients is to replace the chloride. You have to replace the chloride. So the answer would be A because hypochloremia and is, and dehydration the most common causes of metabolic alkalosis, we need to replace that chloride. All right, I saw you were typing. If you, um, if you want me to, uh, to wait until you get whatever put in the chat before we go to number three, that's, that's fine with me. Perfect, bicarb, yes. So if you, if you have an abundance of bicarb and you have a metabolic alkalosis, the fluid of choice is, is 0.9% NACL because of the chloride. That's why it's considered an acidic solution. So this one is, is very tricky because technically, right, A is, is more correct, but B is also correct, right? So this is one of those, um, which of the options is, 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 is most correct, right? So it's, it, this one is definitely a difficult question. My guess is when they, uh, did their exam analysis, this question could have been thrown out because I could see where a lot of candidates would put B. Okay, this one, now, I'm gonna preface, this, this is an older exam, so it doesn't follow the new RECOVER CPR guidelines. Um, but we'll just go through it. All right, when performing CPR, what is the first step of basic life support? So place an IV and give Epi, assess the airway and its patency, start nose-to-ventilation, uh, prior to intubation, or start chest compressions at 200 beats per minute? B, start chest compressions at 200 beats per minute. Um, if, if it said 100 to 120, then D would be correct. Yes, so that is the, so the new, the new guidelines from RECOVER, which is the organization that, um, uh, puts out guidelines for small animal CPR. So I'll just kinda go through them with you real quick. So number one, uh, when you check a patient, Jake and shout, right? So if you see a patient that is non-responsive, you're supposed to literally grab them and try and wake them up and see if they respond. If they don't respond, they don't even recommend feeling for a pulse, listening to their chest, seeing if they're breathing. They recommend starting basic life support right away. So that entails, um, starting chest compressions after assessing, is there an airway obstruction? So you first check the airway. If it's patent, then you go write the chest compressions. The old basic life support, you know, from 10 or so years ago, is ABC, right? Airway breathing, circulation. Now they flipped it, C, CAB. If they have a patent airway, you don't even give them breaths, you just start chest compressions. So this one, like I said, if, if this, if this is, uh, if, if they would have updated that answer, then, um, it would have been correct if it would have said 100. Okay. Oh boy, here we go. Which congenital disorder will cause cyanosis of all the mucous membranes? So we have PDA, reverse PDA, tetralogy of Fallot, and VSD. So here's another, oh, I should have mentioned this in the beginning. Here's another test-taking trick for you. If two of the distractors are like almost the same, they're probably neither correct. Right? So here we have PDA and reverse PDA. So already, you know, without even getting into more of this, you know, more of the physiology of the question and the anatomy of things with congenital cardiac abnormalities, I'm already suspect that those two are probably not right. But what do you think about this one? What would cause an entire pet to be blue? C, yes, tetralogy of Fallot, yes. Perfect. Interestingly, a reverse PDA causes differential cyanosis. The top is blue and the bottom is, oh, no, wait, the one half of the body is blue and the other half is pink. Uh, let me just think, when it reverses, yeah, so it'd be, it would be, the, the top half would be blue because of where the brachial arch comes off of the aorta and where the PDA is located and where it reverses. All right, but you got that one, perfect. Uh-oh, we have an ECG, okay. What is your rhythm diagnosis? So you have an ECG and nothing else except an ECG. So we have sinus tach, atrial fib, supraventricular tachycardia, or ventricular tachycardia. So what do you think about that number five? B, atrial fib. Alright, let's, let's do some ECG stuff because I, I know that's a, that's a challenge. So when you look at an ECG and this one, they should have given you a little more information in the, on the ECG itself, on the graph paper itself. So I'll put in the chat like, yeah, no, that's okay. We'll, we'll go over ECGs real quick. So what I tell folks is you, you, you looking at ECG just like you look at a patient, same way every time, right? So number one, you need to look at the legend, right? So the legend will tell you the lead, the paper speed, and the millivolt sensitivity, right? Because remember in ECG on graph paper, the X-axis, this is time, and the Y-axis over here, that is the strength of the electrical impulse you're seeing. Okay? So number two, what is the heart rate? So here, they don't give you a heart rate. And they don't give you a legend. So we're going to assume on this ECG that it's 25 millimeters per second because that's standard and 1 millivolt per 10 millimeters, that's also standard, right? So what does that mean? 25 millimeters per, per second means every 25 of the little boxes is one second. So basically you, you count how many beats are in however many seconds, right? You can say, alright, I'm going to count three seconds worth of beats or five seconds worth of beats and then multiply that by whatever factor. So if we just say we're going to, excuse me, if we're if we're going to, you know, to let's say three seconds and then figure out the heart rate. So we can just say, alright, I'm going to just start counting here. Right there, right? So one, two, three, four, five, big boxes is one second, right? 25 millimeters per second. So that's one second right there. That's two seconds to here. And now that's three seconds. So from here to here is three seconds. So now what we're going to do is count the number of R waves we have. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Right? So it's going to be 12 times 20. That's a heart rate of 240. Okay, is, I don't care if it's a cat or a dog, that's, that's too fast. Okay, so with heart rate, it's either fast, slow, or normal. If it's normal, we don't have to worry that much about getting the diagnosis right away and potentially giving the pet, you know, an anti-arrhythmic drug or something like that. But here we have a tachycardia. Okay, so we have a tachycardia. And now we just have to say, alright, what kind of tachycardia do we have? So we have to answer some other questions about the ECG. So number three, is there a P for every QRS? And then number four, is there a QRS for every P wave? So if we look here and we're going to look at the bottom, we're going to look at this tracing down here. If you see there's a one right here and a two right, can you see what I'm drawing by the way? Let me, uh, let me stop sharing and share again because sometimes I know the marks don't show up in, in real time. So what I was showing here was three seconds worth of time, counting 25 of these bigger boxes. Sorry, counting three sets of 25 bigger boxes. That gives us three seconds. What I circled up here is lead one and down here is lead two. Okay, so this is a multi-lead ECG. And each beat in lead one corresponds to the same beat in lead two. So this is not a continuous ECG. This is two different leads recording the same beats, same voltage during the same amount of time. So is there a P for every QRS? So if we look at this complex right here, that is the perfect circle around it, right? That looks like a pretty normal T, QRS, T waveform. Right? So we have a P wave. I've got a QRS that's narrow and positive and I've got a T wave. And remember in small practice, the T wave can be positive or negative. We don't put a lot of stock in the T wave like they do in human medicine. So for an impulse to be generated in the heart, it can be generated from anywhere. But the P wave tells us it was generated in the SA node. So when we see P waves followed by a QRS every time, that is a sinus induced rhythm. So you can have a sinus tachycardia. So if somebody like knocked on my front door right now and said, you know, you, you, you just lost your job, right? I would probably get sinus tachycardia. Okay, so sinus tachycardia, pain, stress, right? Uh, it's, it's basically activation of the autonomic nervous system. Okay, so sinus tachycardia, we can see it with drugs also, like stimulants, but for the most part sinus tachycardia is a response to something and it's a normal response. So I've got one complex with a P wave. What about these other ones right here? These ones that are going up and down all kind of crazy. Okay, so what about, what about these guys here? Okay, the ones that have the box around them. You see any P waves with those? Let me refresh this here. What do you think about these complexes in the box? So these complexes in the box, I don't see any P waves. And also, how would we describe these complexes? Are they tall and narrow or wide and bizarre? So the next couple of things we're going to look at when interrogating an ECG, rhythm and morphology. Right? So the rhythm should be, you know, the R to R interval or the rhythm should be consistent, right? The the SA node, when it's firing or even when it's stimulated, those beats will be like old faithful, right? They, they get set off at a certain rate like a metronome. So with rhythm, what we look at is we look at the R to R interval and see, is it consistent or not, right? And just looking at this overall, it is not. Because we have our normal QRS circled here and then we have a bunch of time, right? We have like almost one and a half big boxes worth of time before the next beat. However, the beat following that occurs in a much shorter period of time. So this rhythm would be considered tachycardia, which is irregular, right? So it's irregular. So with an APC, those complexes originate somewhere above the level of the AV node and then have to get carried through the, they have to get carried through the rest of the circuit as they normally would. So let me take a second here. Bring up a blank piece of paper. And we'll do a little drawing. Okay. Let me bring up paint. Get rid of that. Okay, let me get to an area here. Alright, so. Okay. Can you see the drawing now? The heart I drew that's cut in half? Hopefully you can see that. So this is the heart sliced in half, right? Here's the right side. Here's the left side. So we have some myocytes in the right atrium that depolarize faster than the rest of them in the heart under normal conditions. Okay, we call that the pacemaker because they set the pace, right? This is the SA node, the sinoatrial node. Now, all around the heart, we have recording electrodes, which are these little Ts that I'm drawing here. And recording electrodes are just, I think of them like cameras. Right? If, if you watch sports and it doesn't matter what event, there's going to be some, something happening during a sporting event where they're not sure of what occurred, right? Did they drop the ball? Was it a touchdown? Did they, you know, step on the line? Was the ball out, whatever? And so what do they do, right? They say, alright, well, let's look at this angle. Let's look at that angle. Let's look at this angle because they have all these cameras set up. That's the same thing with the ECG leads on the legs, right? So we have lead one, lead two, lead three, AVR, AVF, AVL. Those are basically just leads all around the heart looking at electricity. And they record a positive deflection on the ECG paper if there's electricity coming toward them. If electricity is going away from the recording electrode, it says, oh, it's going away. I'm going to record it negative. So stop and share again to make sure you're seeing everything, okay? The little red Ts are the recording electrodes. Lead two is down here. So when energy is going toward the recording electrode, it is going to make a positive mark on the ECG. So the SA node, all of these myocytes, they depolarize, right? They release a bunch of energy. However, the majority of it, I'm on a call, buddy. So let me, let me, that's my cat's buprenorphine. I'll be right back. Sorry. You can't sign for it? Bye. Sorry about that. They delivered, uh, my, my cat has, uh, fluted and if he doesn't get buprenorphine, he'll be peeing all over the place. Okay. So as I mentioned, the SA node fires, depolarizes. However, the majority of the energy is directed toward the AV node right here. So this recording electrode sees this energy going toward it. And it records a positive deflection like that. Once it reaches the AV node, it goes through that and the bundle of His. So it's kind of almost going away from this electrode, but it, it, it's not seeing energy coming any toward it. So it says, alright, there's nothing coming toward me. I'm going to go back down to baseline. Right? So it's going to go down to baseline. Now the depolarization goes through the bundle branches, right? We have a right bundle branch and a left bundle branch. What side of the heart has more myocardium, right? What side of the heart, left or right, is, is thicker, holds more volume? What's the stronger side, so to speak? Left or right? I know there's this lag, so we're running out of time, but hopefully you, you, you say it's left. So if the left side of the heart has more myocardium, it's going to have more myofibers, right? It's going to need more neuronal input, so to speak. So the left bundle branch is going to carry a little bit more of this voltage than the right. So we have a large vector, right? Where we, if we added up all of the electricity, it would be this big red arrow. Let me stop and start again. So it'd be this big red arrow. So it'd be this big red arrow as we go through the bundle branches. So this recording electrode sees all of that energy and says, wow, that's a lot, I'm going to draw, it's going to, you know, big positive deflection up. Now, we go up each side, up the Purkinje fibers, okay? So these small arrows going up, okay? That is energy going away from this electrode, right? So it's going to say, all right, it's going away, I'm going to record it down. When things reset and repolarize, that's where we get our T wave. So that's how the QRS is formed. If you know the circuit, if you just, every time there's an ECG, if you just answer those questions and imagine how that energy gets um through the circuit in the heart, then you can figure out an ECG. So let's go back up to our question here. So this is a normal complex carried through from the SA node through the normal circuitry. These, there is no P wave. So that means the complex that's recorded originated from not the SA node. Pulses originate, originating from the ventricle are going to take longer to form because the circuit, sorry, I know I'm jumping around, let me go back down here. Because this circuit is a one-way street. You can go from top to bottom through the normal parts of this canal system, so to speak, from AV to bundle of His to the bundle branches and Purkinje fibers. But you can't go backwards. You can't start an impulse in the ventricle and then go up the bundle branches and through the AV node and back up to the SA node. That's not how it works. So when impulses originate outside or below the AV node, if they originate below the AV node in the ventricle, instead of going through the circuit, they have to go from cell to cell to cell. And the analogy I use is what's faster, right? Driving on the highway from point A to point B or taking all the side streets that have the stop signs and stoplights? That's what happens with impulses that originate below the level of the AV node. It takes longer. And remember, the ECG is graph paper. So a complex that takes longer to form is going to be wider. So when you see wide complexes on an ECG, they originated in the, below the AV node, they originated in the ventricle. So we have a tachycardia, we don't have P waves, and we have complexes, right? So if we said this one in the perfect circle is a normal complex, look how long it took for the QRS to form. It took one and a half little boxes. One and a half little boxes, right? And look at these guys over here. They took almost four or five boxes, right? They are much wider and they're almost upside down. Because here, the R wave is positive and here we have a deep S wave going way down, you know, much more voltage than the positive voltage. So those are ventricular complexes. So we have a fast, irregular tachyarrhythmia, wide and bizarre complexes, so this is ventricular tachycardia. Atrial fibrillation, what you would see is a narrow tachyarrhythmia that's usually also irregular. But you would basically see with an atrial fib. Oh gosh, it's not drawing for me right here. I'll show you an example of atrial fib um next meeting, but we're at, we're at time. So we'll catch up on our, on our next meeting. I'm sorry about the lag, I, I've never experienced a lag on Teams. I don't know what's going on with it. Um, I've been on meetings all day and I've not had an issue. So I don't know if it's something new on my end or, or what's going on. But I appreciate you being here, Stephanie, or um I'd be all alone, talking to nobody this last hour. Um, if you know any other candidates that, you know, are, are needing to take the NAVLE again, um, please let them know about our sessions. We have two more coming up. Um, and I really want, you know, uh, to be able to, to help you all um get, get through this. Um, but I'm, I'm confident that you will um. We'll, we'll get you through it. All right, have a great rest of your Friday and have a great weekend.